Good evening and welcome to the August 20th meeting of the Oregon Board of Vegetation. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance in a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
May we have the roll call please, Mrs. Ruth and Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
And Mr. Zbyski?
Here.
Please silence all electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second. Oh, go ahead. Dan, Dan's got it.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zbyski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Public participation at board meetings, do you have any concerns, Mrs. Ruth?
I have none.
You neither, so we can skip that. A presentation of Mr. Dean Sanders.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me time to share about operations with you. In addition to the recurring items that happen every summer, this just gives me a time to shout out to our maintenance folks, our custodial folks, and our IT folks. And I think we did it during Wes's interview of how integrated IT really is in every part of our operations, but especially what we've done today. So if you could extend that thank you to your team, they just do remarkable work every year. So we've done some of the main things that we do every year, asphalt roads, we do the tuck pointing because every one of our buildings is getting older and it's bricks. So we're doing that and chasing that. But this year, Essar kind of put a new wrinkle in our plan. It gave us dollars to change out aging systems, and it was a wonderful blessing, but it was also made it five times as hectic. We, this summer, changed out our fob system, alarm systems, PA systems. We had door replacement and AC at Facet, at Eisenhower Gyms. Those were all Essar projects that we've done. Most are finishing up and just barely finishing up. Hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have air conditioning and Eisenhower and Facet Gyms. The doors still aren't coming in. Clay still has a bunch of doors that are going to be in, as does the admin building down in the other offices. In addition to that, we have put a soft surface at Koi. So now all of our elementary schools have a soft surface playground. And I can tell that Star in Jerusalem probably will be envious of Koi's because now theirs is the biggest, so we'll probably continue to chase that around. But it does look really, really nice, and it's getting great use already this year. But what I really wanted to talk about today is some of the work that we've been doing for the last 15 years. And we've been looking at utilities, electric, water, and gas, and the items that we've done and the dollars that we're saving. For example, in electricity, in 2009 and 2010, our district spent in excess of $510,000 on electricity alone. Last year, we spent just under $278,000. That's a reduction of about 46% district-wide. And in one year, our district was down 15%. And so we've really been putting an effort with LED lighting, as you know, but we are really looking at ways to save in any way we can. And if you recall, just a few short years ago, we put air conditionings in every... So it's not like we're reducing our demand. We're still using a lot of electricity, we're just saving it in a lot of different other ways. Yes, Clay led the way this year with a nearly 40% reduction over last year. And again, we put a concerted effort at Clay this past year on changing out the LED lights throughout the building. So it's paying off dividends already. Water is kind of an anomaly. I imagine that the residents kind of feel the same way. But we've taken measures like putting timers on our automatic flushers so that they're not flushing 365 days, 24 hours a day. We do it based on occupancy sensors. We also replaced water-cooled freezers at night in Facet's kitchens, which was just simply running water through there and then into the sewer system. So, and then all of our boilers that we've done, we've kept up pretty well, but we saved the district nearly $44,000 last year just on doing some of those items and keeping taps of our water. And then in gas, new boilers and being very proactive on our natural gas futures, we use Palmer Energy, and that resulted in district savings of 63%, or just over a quarter of a million dollars over the last 15 years. 36% savings last year. That's a harder one to measure because the weather is so weather-dependent, but if you look over time, we're doing some good things. And really, during that 15 years, Jerusalem was converted from a fuel-oil system to a natural gas system, and that saved an incredible amount of money. But we really do take a look at that, and we've still got a couple ideas on how we can save even more in electricity and water that we're going to be putting in, in addition to our LED throughout the district. Right now, we're at about 60% done district-wide LED. We've got three buildings that are very nearly 100% LED, and then the rest are various degrees of completion. The last item that I want to talk about is, we have had Xerox in our district for years and years and years and years. Last year, so we do a five-year lease, and last year, Applied Innovations won our bid, won our lease, and this year, we have a 30% savings over last year, which equates to about an $85,000 savings over last year. And we multiply that even a little bit more because Wes put Paper Cut. And Paper Cut allows us to put our code in and go collect our copies at the machine. What it keeps is from stacking up unclaimed paper at the copy machine. So a lot of times, people would print it, forget about it, and then print it again and go get it. But this allows us to manage that a little bit better, so we're saving with paper as well. That, we haven't really done an analysis to say exactly how much, but we're saving some dollars there. The bottom line is, we continually look for ways to save, and now that Wes and his team are on board, we have even more tools to allow us to do that well. If you like to nerd out like I do, if you want to see the last 15 years of gas, electric, and water, I can probably show you the high years and the low years and the differences. But we do track that, and we take it very seriously. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
No, I'm just, you know, working with Dean those entire 15 years and really the mastermind behind the whole idea of, you know, these LED replacements over the course of time versus, you know, going with a company that puts an outlay of, you know, sometimes very, very big money and then takes forever to recoup it. We're just kind of doing that slow and steady approach. And I'll tell you what, Dean's doing a fantastic job along with everybody. I mean, I couldn't be happier working alongside him and give him full credit for this side of the house. We are as efficient as anyone, I think, in a school district could possibly be. We've been told that.
We've been told that, yes.
So thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. I think that's wonderful.
Thank you. Doing very much, Dean.
And I apologize because I forgot to read. Please be advised, this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. So now we'll move on to the Alumni Association update from Terry and Dana.
Good evening, everyone. So on behalf of the Clay Alumni Association, I'm Dana Wheeler. This is Terry Hook, who was my third grade teacher. We're excited to be here tonight to kind of give you updates and talk about all things alumni. So if you remember, part of the strategic plan in '22, '23 was to integrate alumni relations, and we have finally gotten to that point. We're really excited, and that bucket will fall under the Oregon School Foundation. Back in, just in March, we have developed an alumni leadership team or committee. Mike is here tonight representing as well. And this committee has basically set up a structure, and we are excited to be on the path moving forward with the launch of a new alumni association.
It's been a while since I've been here. Anyway, I'm very proud and pleased to be part of this group, having been on the 1990s strategic planning committee that first originally talked about having some type of alumni formation, which you all know that have been around for a while, did result in Clay High Alumni and Friends, or CHAFa. And we really are working hard to establish CAA as the official alumni association for Oregon City Schools and Clay High School. And our mission is to create and manage a premier alumni organization. This mission will be achieved by two main purposes. We're going to engage all alumni and the community to continue to grow the legacy of Clay High School, and we want to support Clay High academics, music, arts, and athletics. And all of you have been given in your packets a brochure that includes our vision, our mission, our focus areas, and how alumni can support our association. That we will be raising money for the association under the legal structure that we are able to use with Oregon Schools Foundation. And we have included for you a comparison chart so that you can see the Oregon Schools Foundation compared to the new Clay Athletic Association. You can see where certain things fit for both of those entities. It should help explain that to people that have been involved in the foundation's work for many, many years. We also are creating a new Facebook page, and the old CHAFa Facebook page, which many of our alumni and friends used to keep up on many events and class notes and things, will be named the Clay High School social page, and we have inserted those descriptions for you there. And the good news, so as board members and administrators and so on, if you're asked about any event, as we have known in the past with CHAFa's Groove in the Grove, we are moving on to Eagle Fest, and our first one will be in a year, September of 2025. So we've included that, that we're planning in advance, and they won't have to ask anymore. We have it in the works. We also have Joe Kiss also working with this group so that we can coordinate events for the athletic side, and also he's another great alum, as we all know. So do you have any questions for us on this new adventure?
So I'll just add, I want to appreciate it. We wanted to be a little bit formal, I guess, in letting the board know that this has launched. I know we talked about it kind of informally in our work sessions, but Dana, Terry are both leaders on the group, along with Mike, and, you know, it's kind of a small and mighty group now that may grow over the course of time, but you will see a new tent, you know, one of those kind of, you know, tents that can be out at the football games, and they're going to hand out literature throughout the season, certainly these first couple games, and start to build a little momentum. This is a long time coming, a long time conversation that we've been having since CHAFa decided to, you know, step back as an organization, and we didn't want to be left without, but COVID came in the way and just, you know, blah, 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 here we are. But we're here, and I'm very excited, and, you know, I can't wait for Jim to see what happens in the next four years, because I think you're going to see this organization do some pretty, pretty good relationship types of things on behalf of all the alumni. You know, and I'll tell you what, the reunions and all the things that Amy Hansen has been doing has just grown this to a point where we have no, we have to do this, right? We have people crying out for services and supports by alumni, reunions, whatever. So thank you, guys, so much for coming out tonight and taking your time and sharing. So any questions? I'm hearing you, but good. Thank you very much for coming out and sharing a little bit on that.
Thank you, ladies. Moving on to the Treasuries Report. Mrs. Ruth?
Thank you, Mrs. Mulner. I provided an update for you, a little bit of detail on what's going on with the true cash review. You can see that our overall revenue is up 3.9%. It's primarily driven by return of advances, so that's not real exciting, but of everything else, it's pretty much timing differences, the foundation and restricted increases. Those will be adjusted once all the enrollment is in, so this time of year, I don't get real excited about it yet. Other operating income is actually up. It's our interest rates are, I think we had about $40,000 more in interest this time of year, you know, we've got higher interest rates. Our payment in lieu from the natural gas company was up, you know, maybe only $20,000, but it was up from last year, which is nice. And I don't, I think either we sent the fee link out sooner, I know school's starting a little bit earlier, but we have fees actually coming in in July. Last year, we had next to no fees coming in. So that's why other income, other operating revenues up. Our expenditures increased in overall by 15%. But the first portion, we had, I'm sorry, I'm shucks. Overall, they increased by 15%. Salads were down a bit, but that's just a timing issue. Fringe benefits, that was the largest impact on an increase. And last year, we had a premium credit, and so this year, it looks like we got this bigger increase, but really last year, we switched over to Sigma, and it was a premium credit that was provided, and so that's why that large drop. So excuse me, I didn't have this in front of me. Overall, we're left with 155 true days, true cash days. We're continually being about two weeks lower than last year, so we're continually getting to our cash balances, but we're still fine. As far as the agenda items, I want you to, I know they've been in front of you, but the, they are asking, the junior high athletics are asking for a junior high football fundraising account. The parents want to do fundraising for the program. We'd like to keep a separate account to track it, and we don't want a separate account outside the books. There is a transfer being requested from Junior High Athletics to Barton Scholarship Fund. Every year, I believe there's a wrestling tournament at the junior high in honor of, and then the proceeds from that go to Barton Scholarship. And the money was weren't transferred last year, so I'm asking that they be transferred now. I didn't have the dollar amount at appropriate time. We have an approval for a temporary appropriation measure adjustment. There are only three funds being adjusted. They're all federal grants. The 516 and the 590 are both the silly grants that I've done a request, request for cash. It was on time, but they didn't get it to me until July, so that's a correct, you know, that's adjusting that. And the last one is the 524, which is the Carl Perkins Grant, and that is one that I assume we get what we got last year, but we're getting just a little bit less, so that's why that is changing, because I have my actual amounts. There have been a couple of questions. The last board, well, the last special meeting we had, Mr. Eversman was asking about open enrollment. I just have some very tentative numbers here, just so you know. I know the way we're funding with open enrollment is different now, however, it is still, I hate to say profitable, but it still is a benefit for a district. We're keeping our classrooms full, and we allow programming to continue, so it increases our operational efficiencies. I should point out that last year's income was 1.1 million, and that replaces about 1.648 mils. So we'd have to ask for at least 1.6 more milage, increase in milage, if we did not have open enrollment. And the tentative numbers, we do have at this point, and these are truly tentative because some of these could be half kids, I mean, kindergartners. We have 331 kids open enrollment right now, and I don't mean to imply kindergartners are half kids, but that's half funding. Okay, I don't, yeah.
Well, they're kind of a tiny sort of gap.
They're tiny, but we're only provided half the funding. So it might be down just a little bit from the 331, but initial estimate for this year would be 1.18, you know, 1.18, almost 1.2 million, which is 1.736 mils of voted milage. So I just wanted you to at least have this in your back pocket, because it has changed, and I know I've heard people saying, is it even worth it anymore? And that's a community decision, but financially, at this point, it's, you know, providing us with a benefit. Two other quick things I promised, science of reading, which has been Jen Koi's, she loves it. We have paid 89 teachers for completing the coursework, okay? That's about $82,000, and the benefits is throughout about $95,000. We've gotten about $7,400 back from the state. They only, they only pay us back in the second foundation, so I'm hoping for a big payment in August, we'll see, the second payment of August. But that's 89 out of the whole staff, so. And then another thing, you know, I asked, and you guys were kind enough to allow the real estate valuation challenges, and we had to jump through a few more hoops, but I, every now and then, you know, we got some good results, and so I just want to share so you don't think it's in vain. We only challenge corporations, or we do not challenge homeowner valuations, it's only for corporations. We've got two successful ones that come into an increase in our valuation of about 2.4 million. Doesn't sound like much, but when you put a new milage on it, which is really what this is for, so we don't have is for, so we don't have complete evaporation of milage or valuation, and then it all goes back to the regular, to everybody else, everybody else has to pay more if people aren't paying their fair share. So we did get some increases. I got two in one day, so it was exciting. Take what you can get, but it was exciting. So unless there are questions, that is my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Schruth. May I have a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report, please?
I move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Mrs. Schruth? Roll call.
Okay, and that was Mr. Eversman, or?
Yeah, no, no, that was Mr. Zabisky.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I had my head down, I didn't see. Okay, Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Does anyone have a need for an executive session? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meaning consent Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Schruth.
And Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And would you like to introduce someone?
Yeah, so one of the folks you just approved, our new girls' head basketball coach, so Delmar Pope is in the back there. I think we all kind of introduced ourselves earlier in the meeting, but certainly want to welcome him on behalf of the board, the district, and be a part of our Eagle family. And so, Delmar, I don't know if you want to share who's here with you, or just say hello?
I'm just going to say hello. Thank you, guys, for having me. I'm very excited to be here and ready to get to work.
Yeah, Delmar, I think George is from Woodburn, right?
Yes.
Where he's been in girls' basketball for a while, his assistant, and, you know, he came in from what Mr. Kiss has told me in the interview team, that, that he was by far the best candidate, and the most exciting, and most prepared, and I could tell that the two times I've met him, like, he is excited, like, this is, this is going to be a great thing, and he knows the challenges ahead. So even with that, he's excited, so welcome, and we can't wait to see it get started. I'm sure it probably starts like tomorrow or something. So, so welcome, and to your family, thanks for coming out and supporting me tonight.
And could you introduce an assistant? Would you like to introduce?
My assistant is Brad Burden.
Yeah, we haven't hired any assistants officially, but I think he knows who he wants to. He's a board older.
My name is Brad Burton Burden. Like George said, I'm happy to be here and ready to get to work as well. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Kiss, for finding someone really good for us. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to new business. College Credit Plus. We need a motion to approve the College Credit Plus agreement.
Excuse me, real quick. Feel free if you guys want to sneak out at this point. You won't offend anyone. Yeah, principals, administrators, you have to stay.
Sorry.
I guess, except for Joe.
I'm going to go with, geez.
Okay, moving on. College Credit Plus agreement. We need a motion to approve the College Credit Plus agreement with Owens Community College for the 24-25 school year. A copy of this agreement has been distributed to the board, and I have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item B in new business is transportation contracts. I need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the 24-25 school year. The Shields family to the Toledo School for the Arts, the Teal family to St. Francis Desales, the Mizell family to Toledo Christian, the Cosse family to Toledo School for the Arts, Kruger family to the Toledo School for the Arts, Hess family, Toledo School of the Arts, and the White family to the Toledo School of the Arts. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or roll call? Roll call.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item C, a resolution approving school bus stops for the 24-25 school year. Whereas the Ohio Administrative Code 3301-8313 states that the superintendent and/or his designate need must determine annually the location of all school bus stops, and whereas the school bus stop locations have been established by the superintendent's designate need for the 24-25 school year, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education approval of the list of the established school bus stop locations for the Oregon City School District, and be it further resolved that a copy of the approved list of school bus stop locations be retained on file in the Oregon City Schools Board Office and the Oregon City Schools Transportation Department. Now I have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question for Dean, does any, like, feedback, anything this year? Do we, is this the first year with the new software, and just any updates that you got?
It's, it's marginally better, and we still get the similar phone calls from the ones who live on that edge, that, outside that walking dome. We were working individually with them, but, but it is, it's, it's fewer than last year, and I think it's going pretty smoothly.
What number of stops are we, have we, I know we went through a year of increase and increase, and have we kind of flattened?
We have, but I don't have that number right now.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to roll. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item D, we need a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates under the 22-plus adult high school diploma program. The list was provided to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just add, I don't know the gentleman, I know Council Department of High School works through these and appreciate them very much. His name's Tim Earl, so we want to congratulate him publicly. I don't know him. He was not able to make it tonight. He was invited, you know, we've had, we've always invited those folks to come tonight, but, so he's going to pick up his diploma here this week, but happy for him, and, and so you're approving one individual tonight with that.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Moving on to item E, policies. The following policies are being presented for their first reading. A recommendation for adoption will be made in September. They are items GCBE, Certified Stev- Vacations and Holidays, JFCK, Use of Cellphones and Electronic Communication Devices, EDEC, Artificial Intelligence, IKF, Graduation Requirements, and EHC, Cyber Security. So this is just the first reading, we don't need a motion or any of the other things.
Okay, quick question? Just kind of how Jim, you know, the cellphone thing going good? Any pushback from family, the kids?
I don't know at the high school level. What changed so far this year was the, I guess, who was in charge of whether cellphones were out in the classrooms or not, right? We, we, the junior high had a policy that it was up to teacher discretion, they were not allowed, and they were up, so the high school went with that policy, so we were saying 712. So I don't know if there's been feedback.
Yeah, so far, so good, but I know, you know, any day or any period could be a challenge, but, so you are correct. So the expectation last year was that it was an open door, per se, cellphones could be used anywhere. This year, we just changed the wording a little bit. In the classroom, basically, no phones allowed unless teacher approval for educational purposes.
So they keep them on themselves, on the cells, but just out of sight?
Just make sure they're turned off during the class time. They can use them in the hallway at change of class, and during lunch in the cafeteria. But when they're in the classroom, whether that is for a study hall, stride, class instruction, or their lunch, 13-minute lunch study hall, no phones allowed.
That's because of my son's gambling addiction.
But the, the policy that we're doing first reading for tonight really mirrors, it's, it's more open-ended in the way it's written that allows us to be as restrictive as we choose to as a district, if that makes sense. And, and, you know, we can, you can have a chance to look at all these over the next month, and if you have any questions about any of these, but I think for the most part, you know, we're going to be good. And thank you to Dan, he helped us articulate and update the recommendation for the vacation and holiday one, did a little research, and so really that was an outgrowth of the, not having a place where the holidays were listed in the policy, so we now will have that once this is all completed and final reading, so thanks, Dan, for, for supporting that.
Any further questions on policy? Okay. We need a motion to approve the classified substitute rate of pay. A copy has been distributed to the board, and I have a motion. Excuse me, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item G, we need a motion to approve the following model UN trips and competitions. December 6th to Lansing, Michigan, January 11th to Wog Lake, March 5th to the 8th to Kalamazoo, March 17th to Wog Lake, and may I give a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item H, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. Equipment Sher donating school supplies to Star Elementary valued at $1,000, to Coy Elementary valued at $500, and Patricia Rogers donating school supplies to Clay High School for a classroom valued at $50. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved with gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Second. Discussion or, or questions? And roll call. Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item on disposal of materials. From Clay, it's a Hobart welding machine, Oregon ID 0801, and a second Hobart welding machine, ID 1854. From Eisenhower, it's an Amana refrigerator, and from Stritch, it's three smart boards, 11 computer desks, and three elementary computer cards, and 267 books. And those were purchased with auxiliary funds. May I have a motion to dispose, please?
Comment? I believe you may have misspoke, the welding machine ID 09, and I believe you said 08. 09, 01.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Sure.
For the record.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And moving to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, it's not really in the report, but Jane talked about open enrollment. You do have some open enrollment statistics in your packet. I'm not going to go through them all tonight, I'm working on kind of putting that together on behalf for Dan, and Dan's going to kind of share some of that information, or not all that, with a local committee he's on, with the city's strategic planning group, if I'm saying that right, and that's on Thursday. So I, but I just wanted to share with you what I have so far, and again, it's, it's interesting information. The focus is mainly open enrollment, but I threw some other stats in there just for what it was worth, if, you know, kind of where we're at as a district right now with some numbers. So take a look at that, if you have questions, you know, we certainly can ask anytime on that one. I do want to give a big thank you to Jim, Dr. Fritz, for, you know, the last, you know, several weeks and days, I think it's going very, very well, we're able to talk through things. I appreciate the board giving us these two months, you know, now that we're in the thick of this transition, it's, it's nice to be able to brainstorm and talk through, and certainly for, for Jim to be able to see and be introduced around the district, and I think that's been beneficial, and he's picking things up really fast, he's meeting a lot of people. We've had several lunches and meetings with community members, and a few more to come. So I guess I just want to thank him, I think that's going real well at this point in time, and, but it's a lot, you know, it's a lot to learn, and so he's, he's doing a great job with that. Echo what Dean said about capital improvements, and the maintenance and facilities and all that, you know, we just want, we said it a bunch of times, but we want to say it again because, you know, these people do a lot of work that goes unseen and unknown all the time, and so thankful for this group. Dean and Jeff Siegroy are maintenance, custodian, all of them play such a big part, because people leave on the end of school and they come back, and then all this stuff happens, and most people don't get to see it, except for us. So thank you, Dean, for everything you do. And then just a couple other items of interest. One, on behalf of Clay High School, we want to thank the Jerusalem Volunteer Fire Department. On Friday, Chief Arceletti coordinated, I guess, 10 to 12 Jerusalem volunteer firefighters to instruct the freshmen on CPR and AED instruction. They set up the instructions, it went almost three hours, so that training met our requirement for those kids, so we certainly want to thank them. We know, those of us that have been here, how much they do for our district all the time, whether it's Jerusalem, I see Jeff shaking his head, or Eisenhower, or anything we need here in Oregon, they're willing to do. Same with Oregon Fire folks, whenever we ask, they're always there, so, so we want to thank them publicly for that. And lastly, I just wanted to talk about a little program, Carol had asked me to maybe mention this, and I think it's good timing, because communication is always one of those things that's the hardest to wrap your head around, and just when you think you might understand it or have it down, then something changes and you don't. So one of the things that has changed for us is we brought in a new program, which we talked about a little bit here, called Bright Arrow. This is a new system that we are using as a district to communicate out to the community, to our families, from our principals to our families, you know, we've always had this thing called School Messenger, so we've switched from one to the, to this new one. So you're not going to really see a big notice from those general communications that go out from our schools and from the district, but where the biggest, I believe, change is going to be is the other part of this, which is called Bright Chat. And Bright Chat is something that we haven't had before, which is a tool that will allow our folks to communicate with kids, but under our umbrella. So in other words, a lot of texting goes on that really shouldn't be going on between adult coaches, adult advisors, directly to kids' cellphones. All good intentioned, we are trying to reduce that under a platform that, A, we can see, we can look at if there ever does become an issue, and it still gives that ability for coaches, for example, to text their entire team that goes right to their kid's cellphones, so there's, you know, not, but they're not using their cellphone, they're using their chat app, the Bright Chat app, I'm kind of looking at Wes to make sure I'm saying this correctly. But it also can not only do groups, but it can do individual kids, as long as we have their cellphones. Part of a new feature in enrollment this year was to gather cellphones for students, and we have, you had mentioned, like, is it 80, 90% maybe?
About a thousand. I didn't look at it that way.
Oh, you just said a number.
Uh, 712, it was an optional field this year during re-registration and we've got to be close to that percentage. I didn't run the numbers, but the last time I, I checked, we were right around a thousand students that we had phone numbers provided for, so.
Which is, and I'm sure if there's some that are playing on a team that aren't getting some, and again, we're, we're just, we're just rolling this out. So I can't say it's a, it's a perfect thing yet and there'll be bumps along the way, but Wes, is there anything I missed kind of related to that?
The other, the other change, I guess, that I might want to, um, mention is that previously, school messenger was really only available to our district and building administrators. They were the only ones that had access to the tool. But with Bright Arrow, we're able to grant access to our coaches, like how much of all our teachers also have buttons in their gradebook and stuff that automatically provides access to students and parents by, by class. They don't need to do any extra looking up to find those. It gives them a, a button they can push to send communication out to that pre-selected group. And I've already seen a, a fair amount of that happening already as they, they've been doing that and sending out, whether it's syllabus or, you know, some of the elementaries were doing their, uh, pre-conferences notices, they were sending out to families and stuff. So I'm excited that our staff are, are getting in there and using it. And this is a, another tool that if they were going to do that, we want them to do this to protect themselves and, and make it a little bit easier for our, our families to know where to look.
Yeah, and, and he used the word protect and that's really what that, that piece is all about. We, you know, we, there's a lot of, um, you know, communication that goes on between people, which is almost, you know, we all do it, right? We're all involved with it. We just want to make sure we're all protected. So thank you, Wes, for everything you've done getting that set up and the transition from last year. Yes?
Just a question on that. When will that become, for lack of a better word, mandatory that the staff uses that to, to coach player? When will that officially, officially be?
We're, we're rolling it out this fall and trying to get everybody on, in there and on-boarded and all of that. And I don't know that, I don't see Joe.
This is going to be an agenda item at our August administrative meeting to kind of talk about that specific.
It's a great idea.
Specific, you know, how, and how hard line do we take and when do we take that? Because, you know, if we took it right here at the beginning of August, it wouldn't have mattered, did it? Because no one knew how to use it and it wouldn't have mattered.
Right.
But if we rolled this out and it's already starting to get a lot more use than I would have even guessed because folks have just figured it out. Wes sent out emails and stuff. So to your point, it's going to have to be a, a time and place where it's.
Great idea.
You don't, you don't communicate any other way but through this or a district sanctioned, uh, method. I mean, they can still use emails, you know, they can still do some of those other types of things that we always do. Uh, but yeah, good question. Any other questions on that? So. Good. And I just want to turn it over a little bit if Dr. Fritz would like to share any of his experiences so far.
Oh, it's your mic. No.
I'll try not to, uh, talk into the mic and make all kinds of static noise here.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's all right. Kind of sound like Donald Duck down there. It's all good.
I know, story of my life.
It's all right. Um, well, thank you, uh, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just want to say it's been a great start for me, but more importantly, a great start for the school year. Uh, I had an opportunity to be in all the buildings yesterday, a couple of buildings this morning to see parents and students walk into the building. Um, saw a lot of great things, a lot of great development of relationships with staff and, uh, with the students and the parents. Um, and I also, I reiterate what was said earlier about the preparation that went into this school year to, to make sure that first day was a success. Um, I saw it from the staff, I saw it from the transportation department, the bus drivers and, and, you know, uh, from food service to custodial, everybody involved, uh, to, to make sure that it was ready to go. And it was. Uh, and I was very impressed with how clean the buildings, uh, were, uh, especially in light of all of the, you know, different construction things going on and, uh, you know, you get teachers moving from classroom to classroom and all those sorts of things. That really was, uh, I was very impressed by that, especially here at the high school. I have to admit, I've been in a lot of different high schools and walking through this high school, I have to say, I mentioned this to Hal, uh, one of the cleanest high schools I've ever seen in my life. I mean, it's, it's very impressive and I, that's a testament to everybody that works here, but especially the administration of this building. Um, you know, and that plays into the part of behaviors and how we, you know, approach our day and so forth. And so, uh, I appreciate that. Had a great opportunity to talk with the staff, the certified staff at the opening meeting and, and share a brief message with them about being great today, about persevering and, uh, taking care of themselves. Uh, just sharing a little bit of that in relationship to who I am as a person, to hopefully get them to get to know me a little bit too. And I'll be sharing some messages with them throughout the school year, as I mentioned to all of you, um, and, and in reference to that and trying to keep that going and making them think about those things as we, uh, move through this school year because they're very important. And I'm just trying to listen and learn. Um, honestly, I've had a lot of great conversations with administrators. Now I'm starting those with staff members, um, and, and different groups and, and community members and, and business leaders and so forth. And just trying to understand where the district is and where we all want to go, uh, in, in the future. And, and so I look forward to continuing that, um, and developing, you know, uh, my idea of what the district is and, and working with all of you to, uh, make sure we're, we're moving in the right direction for this community and, and more importantly, for our students. Because we all, we want all of them to walk across that stage, future-ready and, and able to do whatever they want to do upon graduation. So, uh, that's going to be my goal and especially with this listening and learning just what's going on right now. So. Any questions for me? I'm very impressed with Carol's shoe selection tonight. Very much appropriate. And she's staging me up a little bit here with my tennis shoes, so I appreciate that.
She's going to come out of retirement in the alumni game with the girls' basketball players.
There you go.
Three steps top. There you go.
Thank you. And that concludes your superintendent's report.
Okay. Any old business. Okay, board discussion. At the August Good News Report. And I very rarely do alumni, but I thought tonight's was kind of important. Mr. Dan Tomansky, a graduate of Clay, served as the grand marshal for the Toledo Jeep Fest. But that was kind of congratulations to him. From our elementaries, all three schools started out with our color days and that encourages students to wear a particular color each day. And it begins a skillset of matching words to specific objects. The Jahathon for Jerusalem is September 13th. That's their only major fundraising. Star students will be selling candy starting the end of September. And watch your newsletters for the opening of the parent organization meetings. Your support of our students has second to none from any district that I know and we hope this continues for this year. From Eisenhower and Facet, the open houses and first-day experiences for each grade were well-attended and great successes. And their parent organizations will start having their meetings soon. Eisenhower is September 9th at 7 o'clock. Eisenhower's 6th grade camp meeting is August 28th. And Facet's Technology for Parents and Guardians is August 26th. And Facet DC meeting is September 4th. Getting ready to face the whole year with those things. So check your calendars for Facet's sports events. Fall sports are in full swing and I don't usually do this, but just to show how busy our Clay athletes are here, this is a small example of what's happening. Cross-country has a, a meeting at a meet at the Seneca East on Saturday, the 24th. Boys and girls golfers, he has various meets with the boys being at home at Mommy Bay on Thursday. Girls tennis has a home game meet on Thursday and they were out there tonight. Girls soccer has a home game tomorrow, Wednesday. Girls volleyball will be home Thursday. Boys soccer is a heels on Thursday. The equestrian team has its first contest on September 8th and that's at the Ottawa County Fairgrounds. Football plays its first game on Friday. Homecoming is Friday, September 13th and the band marches on and, on and, on. And all sporting events are listed on the sports calendar on the district website. From the district, free and reduced lunches applications are available both online and in each school. It's really important that those families who are eligible fill out these documents and receive the services because our students learn much better with full tummies. And as a side note, the number of students who receive these benefits does affect district funding. All school newsletters are available on the district website. So if you have a student at Coy and you want to know what's going on at Eisenhower, you can access those online. Speaking of the website, I found something there that I didn't know was there. Did you know you could read items in any language from English to Zulu and everything in between? There's a little drop-down up at the top and there's about 100 different languages you can choose from. And I just discovered that. I just thought that was fantastic.
Wes speaks all those languages, right?
Yep.
And then lastly, to go on with, uh, what Hal said, the oak smokestack between the Fine Arts Building and the Ag Building at Clay has been painted with a huge eagle descending from the sky in attack mode. You too can be carried away, footageically, of course.
We do want to have some kind of recovery. We will with that too, so.
But it's kind of fun to take pictures.
Heck, yeah. And Dean Davis is Baintis Warlord.
I love that.
So I'm doing that now. I think I might put that in, maybe I forgot to say it. So, yeah, appreciate all his energy.
So do we have anything else?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, and I'm glad that Mr. Kiss is back. Um, the band director had reached out to me because of my work with the veterans community to tell me that, uh, September 13th, they're going to do a salute to veterans halftime show. And to that end, uh, we've, uh, reached out, uh, you know, veterans and, and we've had a meeting with, with Mr. Kiss and, uh, they're, they're excited and they're going to turn out and we're going to do some, uh, things to make them feel, uh, just how appreciated they are in the Oregon School District that night. And I encourage everyone to come out and if you know anybody, uh, in our greater Oregon, Jerusalem, Harborview communities that's a veteran or their grandfather's and they live outside the community, um, let them know to be on hand. It's going to be a great salute and I'm excited for the band director to, to have come up with this idea and help him, uh, be in, you know, get the veterans community to come out. I think long-term, that's good that they know that, uh, at Clay High School and Oregon City Schools that, that we care. We're going to show them that appreciation. Jeff's a veteran.
Yep.
Yeah, Mr. Zavisky?
Be there.
Um, I just want to kind of take a moment and give a warm thanks to the district on behalf of the Mercy Toledo, um, administration team. We, as you know, last month I talked about, we had a Mercy's Got Talent Show called at Facet. Um, they were blown away by the facility. They, they loved it. Um, the Oregon Community Theater Group, you know, the, the, we just got the video of it, you know, just first class production, uh, the lighting, the, the sound, everything went off without a hitch. Um, so I'll send the video link. You can see me say thank you to you guys. I call out Dean and stuff out.
Did, uh, real quick, did Marty and Keith help the OCT folk run the lighting and all the backstory?
They, those two ran it.
They did it all?
They did everything for us.
Yeah, okay.
They mic'd the sub, they videotaped, they did everything.
Good, good.
Um, I mean, everyone, I think we're going to be asked to come back and use it again next year and the same thing. Um, for what we got, the price we paid, they said we can't get anything of that quality for that cost. And Dean, I know put, you know, just a lot of, you know, there's a lot of concerns and